Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Will everyone please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Father Stephen Yosko?
Good and gracious God, King of heaven and earth, we come before you who governs the world through your providential wisdom and who has generously bestowed upon the human race the great dignity of participating in your governance. Look kindly upon all those who lead us in civil government, especially these members of the Schenectady County Legislature here present. In your mercy, cast out from their midst all that blinds them to the pursuit of the common good, and in exchange, fill them with the gifts of your spirit, so that with hearts and minds made one with yours, they may strive to establish true peace and justice for the community in which they have been called to serve. Finally, Lord, cast your merciful gaze upon the souls of those men and women who have served in this legislature but who have since passed from this life. Having shared in your governance as faithful stewards in this life, may they now share in your joy for all eternity. We ask all this in your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by legislator Russo.
(inaudible)
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 Yesterday marked the 22nd anniversary of the September 11th attack on our nation. In many respects, it is difficult to believe that so much time has passed since that warm, sunny Tuesday morning that started out like any other day, but which saw life in our country changed in the blink of an eye. I don't think any of us will ever forget where we were on that tragic Tuesday morning when we heard the news that our nation had been attacked. We'll never forget the disturbing images we saw on the news that day. We'll never forget the feelings of sadness we all experienced for the victims of this senseless act, nor should we ever forget. As the years pass, it is important that we continue to remember this tragic day and ensure that future generations, like the students who attend this school who were not even born when the attack took place, are aware of the events surrounding this attack on our country. We must always remember the innocent victims who worked in the Twin Towers and Pentagon, as well as those who were passengers on American Airlines Flight 11, American Airlines Flight 77, and United Airlines Flight 175. We must always remember the brave passengers of United Airlines Flight 93 who gave their lives in an effort to prevent further tragedy. We must always remember the brave first responders, far too many of whom made the ultimate sacrifice while selflessly putting themselves in harm's way to save others. And we must also remember the way our country came together as we all recovered from this attack. If we don't, then we have failed to adequately honor their memory of all the 9/11 victims and we have let our attackers win. At this time, I'd like to ask you to all join me in a moment of silence to honor the victims of the September 11th, 2001 attack, especially with those with close ties to Schenectady County and the capital district. So last year, we began holding legislature meetings in various locations in the county's four legislative districts to make county government more accessible to our residents and to give them an opportunity to hear from us and for us to hear from them. This time, I'd like to take a moment to have my colleagues introduce themselves. My name is Tony Jazinski. I'm Chair of the County Legislature and I represent the Village of Delanson, Town of Duanesburg, Town of Prince Town, and the Town of Rotterdam. We'll start on my far left with legislator Hess.
My name is Eric Hess. I represent Duanesburg, Prince Town, Village of Delanson, and Rotterdam Junction on the legislature. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Mae Pratt. I live in the hamlet of Alplas, which is located in the town of Glenville. I represent District 3, which encompasses Scotia, Glenville, and Niskiuna.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Holly Volano. I represent District 4, Rotterdam, Duanesburg, Prince Town, Rotterdam Junction, and Delanson. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hylo Samuel. I live in Schenectady, and I represent District 2, which is the eastern part of the city. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Cuomo. I represent District 4, which is Rotterdam, Prince Town, and Duanesburg.
Hi, my name's Kathy Gata. I represent District 3, Village of Scotia, Town of Glenville, and the Town of Niskiuna. I'm very happy to be in my district.
Good evening. Rory Fluman, Schenectady County Manager.
Jeff Hall, Clerk of the County Legislature.
Hi, I'm Pete Frazoni. I live in Glenville and represent Niskiuna, Glenville, and Scotia. And Niskiuna is my school district. I've had a couple of kids that have, three kids that have graduated from Niskiuna and still have two more here. So it's good to be here at the high school tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle Ostelich. I represent District 3 as well, Niskiuna, Scotia, Glenville. Niskiuna's my hometown, and it's great to see everyone here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rich Paterny. I represent District 1 in the city of Schenectady, and I just would like to thank everyone for their hospitality and having us here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Russo. I'm also a District 1 county legislator. District 1 is made up of the neighborhoods of the North Side, the Mohawk Harbor, Bellevue, downtown, and a portion of Mont Pleasant. I appreciate everyone coming out this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Omar Sterling McGill. It's great to be here at Niskiuna High School, and I'd like to thank the superintendent and principal for hosting us this evening. It's great to be able to bring our show on the road to engage with more of our constituents. I do represent District 1 as well, with the two fine gentlemen to my left, and I am excited to be here. Thank you.
(inaudible) Sorry, the computer was hiding the button. My name is Gary Hughes. I am the Majority Leader of the County Legislature, and I also represent District 2 in the city of Schenectady, which is essentially the eastern, southern half of the city. And it's a pleasure to be here in Niskiuna, and we're happy to be able to get around the county and hear what people have to say. Thank you very much for your hospitality.
Thank you all. We're also missing this evening legislator Tom Constantine, who represents District 3, and legislator Philip Fields, who represents the city of Schenectady also. I'd like to extend my thanks to our hosts this evening, Niskiuna School Superintendent Carl Mumenthay and Niskiuna High School Principal John Ricker. Without their partnership and willingness to open their facility for us, we could not provide this service to our residents. And I believe we have the superintendent here with us this evening. Sir, would you like to introduce any of your team members?
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's our pleasure, on behalf of the Board of Education, our faculty, staff, students, and families, to welcome the members of the Schenectady County Legislature to Niskiuna High School. We're delighted to host this evening's board meeting and grateful for the partnership that we have with municipal leaders at the town and county level. I'm joined this evening by our high school principal, Mr. John Ricker, who will provide a very brief update on the opening of our high school momentarily. I'm happy to report that we were delighted to welcome our 4,300-plus students back to our campuses last week on Wednesday and Thursday. We've enjoyed a very successful reopening of our schools for the new school year. Our voter-approved capital project is moving forward on budget and ahead of schedule, which we're delighted to report, and we remain very, very grateful for the community's ongoing support of our students and our programs. We're also delighted to welcome over 50 new members to our faculty and staff, including over 25 new teachers to the district. And despite all your hearing about the shortages of educators, we were very close to fully staffed when we opened our schools last week. We're delighted to have you here, grateful for the partnership, and happy to walk alongside you in service to the taxpayers and residents of Niskiuna, our surrounding communities, and Schenectady County. It's now my pleasure to introduce our high school principal, Mr. John Ricker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mumenthay, and to our honorable members of the Schenectady County Legislature. It is my pleasure to welcome you here tonight to Niskiuna High School. We just opened our doors for our 67th year of operation here in Schenectady County. As Mr. Mumenthay said, we have a longstanding history and tradition of partnership with our county leaders. We look forward to the ongoing, that ongoing relationship down the road. We are very, very fortunate to have a world-class faculty and staff here at the high school. We service over 1,400 students. We are very proud to say that we have over 25 nations represented in our hallways and over 60 languages spoken in our hallways. So we pride ourselves on being a diverse high school. We have a strong focus on teaching and learning. We have strong support from our community and our parents, who stand behind us in our mission and our work with our students. And we look forward to the challenges that come ahead as we prepare our students to become lifelong participants in society and in our, hopefully, in our local Schenectady County. So as a proud member of the county myself, I am honored to have you here with us tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to greet you.
Thank you. When I move to our Legislative Conference and the Rules Committee to be Chairman, legislator Gata.
Thank you, sir. We are opening up the Committee on Rules, and we have, looks like, four things on our agenda. The first thing is a resolution honoring Hispanic Heritage Month 2023 in the county of Schenectady. It's going to be presented at a later date, but I'm just going to read a little bit of this if I can. "Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the traditions, ancestry, and unique experiences of those who trace their family background to Spain and Latin American countries, and accomplishments made by such individuals serve as an inspiration to all who seek freedom, opportunity, and a new beginning for themselves and their children. And these individuals and their ancestors have contributed greatly to our nation in all areas, including science, art, music, sports, education, and public service, and have bravely served their country in large numbers in times of peace, war, and in every way in our nation's history. And that the Schenectady County Legislature celebrates the culture, social, political, and economic contributions and ties that exist within the Hispanic and Latino communities of the United States and Schenectady County, thus honoring September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month 2023 in the county of Schenectady." And second on our docket is R-90, a resolution confirming the appointment of persons to various boards, councils, or commissions. And we have a few listed there for our Capital Region Workforce Development Board, Schenectady County Environmental Advisory Council, and Schenectady County Environmental Advisory Council co-chairs. And I'd like to thank these people for volunteering their time to be on these boards. If I could get a motion?
Move to report.
Thank you, sir. A second?
Second.
For whoever said that.
Second.
(laughing) Thank you. It's hard when you guys are behind me.
You need a rearview mirror.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Third, we have R-91, a resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the Federal Aviation Administration and the New York State Department of Transportation for ramp and taxiway improvements at the Schenectady County Airport and to make appropriate budgetary amendments. And I believe Peter Knutson, our Director of Bureau of Engineering, will be explaining this one for us.
Good evening. For this project, it is for the Northern General Aviation Ramp area, which is situated behind the ESAM museum. These, this pavement hasn't been rehabilitated in any way in about 20 years and has reached the end of its useful life. Some parts of it are in serious disrepair, and we have appropriated money through the FAA to get this project grant authorized from the FAA. It is 90% federal, 5% state, with a 5% local match. If anybody has any questions?
Is the R-91 and R-92, what, if you could just explain 92?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So R-92 is actually situated directly next to it. It is the taxiways that feed into this airport, or into this ramp area, rather. Those taxiways, so the way the FAA does it is it breaks out grants for design, and then a year, two years later, they do the construction portion. So we have, the first, R-91 is actually a resolution for the design of the ramp, of the ramp area. And then R-92, we actually designed the taxiways to be repaired two years ago, and now we have the money appropriated for the actual construction of those taxiways. Those taxiways, again, haven't been, had any type of major reconstruction in the last about 20 years. The signage and lighting is actually not up to current FAA standards, so we'll be reconstructing it and bringing it all up to the current standards.
Thank you. Any questions?
Looking for a resolution on 91 and 92?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Mr. Russo, thank you so much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. The Committee on Rules is now closed.
Thank you very much. It's now time to open the privilege of the floor, and members of the public present who would like to address us during privilege of the floor, we ask that you come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record, and direct your comments to me as the Chair of the meeting.
Hi, my name is Vicki McHella, and I live, do you want my address? Or, yes? I live in Niskiuna. So I'm here tonight, I've lived here 27 years, by the way. I'm speaking on behalf of Progressive Schenectady. Progressive Schenectady is a local grassroots organization that was formed in 2017 by three local women after they met on the march, on the bus going down to the march, the Women's March in Washington, DC. Our slogan is activism made easy. I could add fun to that because I have thoroughly enjoyed being on the steering committee of Progressive Schenectady for the past few years. Progressive Schenectady partners with other progressive groups to make progressive social change and protect our democracy. Our three main issues are reproductive rights, common sense gun legislation, and climate. And some of the many activities that we've done over the years have been registering new voters, fundraisers, social events to raise money for asylum seekers, YWCA Women's Shelter, and many, many others. We do postcard writing events to support progressive candidates for office. We've organized and sponsored and helped publicize rallies and protests, for example, regarding the Ellis-St. Peters merger, the Burdette, proposed Burdette closing, the Schenectady Earth Day celebration in April, and the Climate March this Sunday in New York City. But I want to just talk about one issue that Progressive Schenectady is, I could, I could have talked about many, many things tonight, but I will just speak about one thing because it does relate to the county legislature and something that is an important piece of legislation that I hope you will support. And it's called skip-the-stuff legislation, and it relates to our, the climate activism and the environmental activism of Progressive Schenectady. So skip-the-stuff legislation requires restaurants and takeout establishments to, for the default to be that no plastic utensils, condiments, napkins, straws, any of that be included when somebody is ordering takeout food, and that someone should have to ask for that in order for that to, to happen. If passed, this law would reduce waste, save restaurants money, and tackle climate change because plastic is made from petroleum. It's already the law in Albany County, Ulster County, and New York City. And Schenectady has an opportunity to be on the forefront of New York's reusable revolution by passing this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Hi, my name's Eliza Nispahy. I live on Story Ave, just down the street. I'm delighted to see our superintendent here tonight. I'd like to talk about making our town, Niskiuna, a little nicer, more walkable, a lot. It seems like there's a war on pedestrians in this town, and part of it is that Knott Street project. I know you guys are really thrilled with it, but it's awful. It's really ugly. I know that there's supposed to be some beautification going on. I haven't heard about it. There's curb cuts that are lacking for people to walk. I've already seen a lot of near accidents on Knott Street, but it's done. It's a disaster. But I know you were in our previous superintendent when this horrible thing happened, that they gated a walkable way to Hillside School, cut off access for our kids in our neighborhood. This county needs to make sure that people are out walking, our kids are out in playgrounds, and those, that gate is not there. The district had that easement for 67, more than 60 years. I grew up, I was born at Ellis Hospital. I grew up on Vannantor Road. I got hit in front of my house on Vannantor Road. That walkway to that, that gate that should not be there should, should go away, and so that kids can play. We need more sidewalks. We need more accessibility for people on feet, people with bikes. There's no curb cuts for those kids with bikes at that Knott Street project. It's horrendous. Let's try and do things to get our kids, to get our citizens outside, moving around, talking to each other. There is a love affair with the freaking car, and it's evidenced everywhere in this town, and it's so sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Hello, I'm Kathy Cusman. I live on Shannon Boulevard, which is right off Route 7. I'm also a member of the Complete Streets Committee for the town of Niskiuna. One thing I wanted to talk about was Route 7. When I first moved here about 32 years ago, New York State DOT was doing a major rehabilitation of that road. I don't know if you remember it then, but it was four lanes. It was full of potholes. It was just not something you could navigate. So they undertook this renovation. As you know, there's five lanes there. There's a turning lane, there's sidewalks, and for the most part, I think the public was pretty happy with it. But with any kind of, you know, major improvement to a road such as Route 7, what came with that was more traffic and at higher speeds. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but I'm sure maybe many of you are, but the last three years, there has been several major crashes on just a very small segment of Route 7 in Niskiuna. Those crashes have resulted in five fatalities. I don't know how many serious injuries. I can't speak to that. And I really can't speak to the reasons why this has happened. We have to assume that some of it is because of the high speeds. It could be, you know, driver behavior as well, but we just don't have that information. We are aware of the fact that New York State DOT is doing a study to look at this segment of the road. We don't know what the scope is. We're hoping that in addition to enforcement of traffic laws, that they're also looking at other improvements as well. Engineering solutions to this, to make the roads safer for cars and pedestrians. There are many, you know, on, on Route 7, it's almost impossible to cross that road, even with crosswalks. You know, right now, what we need is some kind of medium there in some, several locations just to make it safer and more comfortable for pedestrians to cross that road. That's just one of our considerations that we're looking at in the Complete Streets Committee. But we hope you, as the Schenectady County, will help us to address this issue with the New York State DOT. We realize that's a state route, but you do have some influence over that, and we hope you can work with us in making Route 7 a safer road for not just vehicular traffic, but also pedestrians, okay? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Good evening. My name's William Chapman. I'm at 1465 Clifton Park Road in Niskiuna. I'm a member of the Town Complete Streets Committee in the town of Niskiuna, and I would like to start by thanking the members of the legislature for their support and their financial support, especially for some projects that have happened in the town. I live half a block from the Co-op Block, and there are some definite improvements that have happened there. There are now sidewalks on both sides of the road. There are push-button crosswalks on both sides of the road. The parking has been made safer for people to get in and out. We don't have people backing out on the street. We also appreciate the crosswalks that have gone on at Saint, at River Road and Saint Joseph's Drive. It's a, it's a new one that's there, but we also have one on Aqueduct Road that's across from the old Auto Salvage Yard that facilitates bicycle safety and pedestrian safety there. We also have the crosswalks on Upper Union Street, and we have the push-button crosswalks in the Co-op Plaza. And we also have the, the roundabout at River and Rosendale Road, which has made it much safer, much more accessible for motorists to move through that intersection. We are very much interested in pedestrian and bike safety, and while we're in the, the house of the, the school district, I would like to thank Superintendent Mumenthay, Principal Ricker, and members of the school board. Kathy Colson is here with us tonight. They've been very supportive of our efforts to make for better bike and pedestrian safety in the town. Our town supervisor and our town board have supported a Quality Communities Grant to do a sidewalk on Cornelius Avenue, getting from Story Avenue to Hillside Elementary, and on Birchwood Lane to get from Troy Road to Birchwood Elementary. And so the, the town is doing some effort there, providing 50% of the match for those projects. It might be $550,000 for the grant, $550 for the town, and they found the money to do that. We've also had discussions with the, the school district, and Superintendent Mumenthay has provided data that has helped us on that grant, and the school board's been very open. We've been looking at pedestrian and bike access at each. been looking at pedestrian and bike access at each campus, and been working on how to, how to make that safer. We still have some things that we would like to ask support from. The Complete Streets Committee has taken a long look and been actually working for some time on a side path on Rosendale Road. Rosendale Road is a, is a county road, there are two schools on it, Rosendale Elementary and Iroquois Middle School. The school district is going to be moving 7th and 8th graders in the entire Niskuna School District to Iroquois Middle School in a, in a few years, they'll all be there. And so one of the things that we would like to work on, we'd hope we'd have support from the county, is to take a look at a side path on Rosendale Road that goes from Rosehill Boulevard down to really the Lyshe, the entrance to the Lyshe Kill Preserve. And that's gonna provide service to Iroquois Middle School, to Rosendale Elementary School. Will make it safer, and also having that transit way will also allow residents, students that are on Fernwood and Godfrey, and also between Rosendale Road and Troy Road to be able to get access to the schools. And it's a county road, it's a, a network that connects a lot of homes, we want to make sure that safe passageway is there. And we'll be asking the school and the town for more assistance to get through River Road Park so that bicyclists can come the other direction from Old Niskuna, Knott Street East, Fox Hollow, over to Hempstead Road, through River Road Park, back way to get into Rosendale Elementary, so they'll be able to bike safely to school. What our effort is, we want to see students walk and bike to school, but we have to have healthy infrastructure in place before we can do that. We don't want to ask parents to risk the safety of their kids to get to school, we want safe access way to be there, and so we're asking that. Another item, and also I have a handout, Carla Dougal is on the Complete Streets Committee, she has a letter concerning access to Rosendale Road, and you all have that. Also on Knott Street, you, you may notice that if you've driven Knott Street, between Baker Avenue and Lexington Parkway, there's about a two-block stretch right there, and when you leave the co-op, there's a sidewalk that goes from the Niskuna co-op down to Baker, and when you get to Lexington Parkway, there's a sidewalk that takes you down to Ellis Hospital. But there's a hill in the road right there, and it's been that way for 20 years, we've issued our prayers to the county to, to finish the sidewalk portion of it right there, and, and the hill is dangerous, the motorists can't see the pedestrians, the pedestrians can't see the motorists. So we, we need your help to, to get that done. We do have some grant money, and I think the grant money's a little bit short, so, you know, we'd be asking the county director of Public Works to find a little money there. Also interested in a sidewalk, a crosswalk at Regent Street and Knott Street, a push-button crosswalk there, a lot of students cross to the south to get to Van Antwerp Middle School, a lot of folks on the south side of Knott Street go across that to get to the high school, and so the, the push-button crosswalks are gonna work well in front of the co-op, but we may need one there to help with student movement. Also, just quickly, we've had residents that live on Van Antwerp Road, from the traffic circle down to Knott Street, that are saying, gee, we, we need a side path on that road too. It has some of the same problems that Rosendale Road is, it's a, it's a busy road, it's a curving road, it doesn't have access for bicyclists or pedestrians, and so that's something that we're working on. And we also have had residents, really from Knott Street East all the way down to Balltown Road, that are on Van Antwerp, that would like to see a side path there also, so we'll be working on that, and, and then finally, there's a intersection, we're glad the county's gonna take a look at Rosendale Road and Old River Road, that intersection right there, we're glad you're gonna do that. There is a, a little segment right there from Niskuna Road down to the entrance to the bike path, so when you're doing the work on the intersection, we might be asking for maybe 40 yards of asphalt that would get from Niskuna Road down to the entrance to the train station park, so people really over by Troy Road can take Niskuna Road, get over there, and can walk or bike on the asphalt path that would get them down to the train station park and access to the Mollac Hudson Bike Path. So anyway, we're very appreciative of the effort that you've given us before, we're trying to work with you, with the school district, with the state, and to promote bike and pedestrian safety, and, you know, it's an old phrase, but a good one, that working together works, and, and that's what we're trying to do, so thank you for, for hearing me out.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to just speak on behalf of the Niskuna co-op. My name is Shannon Rizley, and I'm the general manager there. I really wanted to thank everyone that's here tonight for the Knott Street Improvement Project that has made, from the beginning to the end, right? I know there was a lot of fears and unknowns going into that project, but I think the county worked great with the town in regards to making sure that the businesses had the least amount of impact possible, and the end result is far better than we could have ever expected. At any given time before that project, a car could have driven through any one of those business fronts, there was nothing to protect the building from the cars that were right up against the building, as well as the sidewalks now, you could not get from one side of the plaza to the other without, without having to scale down some steps that were a bit dicey. So I know that, I've been in talks with Metroplex, and that there's benches and planters to come, and I can just envision that being a gathering place for the community. So on behalf of the co-op, we wanted to thank you for that, as well as the Schenectady County Connects Program. This is the second year that we have had students work with us at the co-op and learn different life skills and work skills, and we have really enjoyed seeing them flourish throughout the summer, so thank you on behalf of the co-op for both of those things.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Seeing none, declare privilege of the floor closed, and I'll call to order the September Meeting of the County Legislature with the clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Fields excused, Mr. Russo.
Present.
Ms. Pratt.
Present.
Mr. McGill.
Present.
Mr. Constantine is excused, Mr. Samuel.
Here.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Here.
Mr. Cuomo.
Here.
Mr. Paterno.
Present.
Ms. Hostelich.
Here.
Ms. Villano.
Here.
Mr. Hess.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Present.
Ms. Gadda.
Here.
Mr. Juzinski.
Present.
Thirteen present, two excused.
Thank you. Members received copies of the minutes from the meetings held on August 8th and September 5th. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are hereby adopted. Clerk will read the list of reports received.
We've received reports from the Commissioner of Finance, Department of Ways and Measures, and the county clerk.
Thank you. Committee reports, legislator Frizzoni reports from the Committee on Codes, Judiciary, and Consumer Affairs.
Mr. Chair of the Committee on Codes, Judiciary, and Consumer Affairs met on September 5th, 2023, and reported to the Agenda Resolutions 155 and 156.
Thank you. Legislator Hasselich with the person in the Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services.
Mr. Chair of the Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services met on September 5th, 2023, and reported to the Agenda Resolution 157.
Thank you. Legislator Gadda reports on the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, sir. The Committee on Rules met earlier this evening and reported to the Agenda Resolutions 151, 152, 153, and 154.
Thank you. Our first item this evening is Resolution 151-23, sponsors of the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution honoring Hispanic Heritage Month 2023 in the County of Schenectady.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields excused, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused, Mr. Samuel.
Aye.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Hostelich.
Yes.
Ms. Villano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Thirteen aye, two excused.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next name is Resolution 152-23, sponsors also the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution confirming the appointment of persons to various boards, councils, or commissions.
Any discussion? Legislator Hughes.
Just a couple of points, I think it's always important to point out, I think particularly when we're among visitors, that the persons who serve on these boards and councils do so gratis, with no compensation for the county, and particularly in terms of the County Environmental Advisory Council, what they bring is, is their, their expertise and their passion, and they really serve as a, as a sounding board and a source of ideas for the county in terms of the various initiatives that we undertake in the, in the area of the environment. They really have been, in my time on the legislature, very invaluable. The second group is our Workforce Development Board, and this is a, actually an intermunicipal group comprised of the city of Albany, Albany County, Rensler County, Schenectady County, and the Workforce Development Board works to strengthen skills, it's part of the effort underway across the state to help people to adapt the skills, acquire the skills that they need to be productive members of the community, so we appreciate all of those efforts and by all of those people.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields excused, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused, Mr. Samuel.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Hostelich.
With many thanks to those who serve on those committees, I vote aye.
Ms. Villano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Thirteen aye, two excused.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next name is Resolution 153-23, sponsors of the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the Federal Aviation Administration and the New York State Department of Transportation for ramp and taxiway improvements at the Schenectady County Airport and to make appropriate budgetary amendments.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields excused, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused, Mr. Samuel.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Hostelich.
Yes.
Ms. Villano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Thirteen aye, two excused.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next name is Resolution 154-23, sponsors of the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the Federal Aviation Administration and the New York State Department of Transportation for taxiway improvements at the Schenectady County Airport and to make appropriate budgetary amendments.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields excused, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused, Mr. Samuel.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Hostelich.
Yes.
Ms. Villano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Thirteen aye, two excused.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. Our next name is Resolution 155-23, sponsors of the Committee on Rules, the clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the Federal Aviation Administration and the New York State Department of Transportation for ramp and taxiway improvements at the Schenectady County Airport and to make appropriate budgetary amendments.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields excused, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine is excused, Mr. Samuel.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Hostelich.
Yes.
Ms. Villano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Thirteen aye, two excused.
Thank you, the resolution has passed. And that concludes our official business for this regular meeting of the County Legislature. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Aye.
Legislatures change adjourned, again, we'd like to extend our thanks and appreciation to the Niskuna School District Superintendent and Principal for allowing us to be here and with you this evening. Thank you all.